Carbonaro?
Here.
Daney?
Here.
Hopkins?
Here.
Ranky?
Here.
President Wallace?
Here. I've requested that Pastor Ian Simkins from Poplar Creek Church do our invocation this evening. And by the way, Poplar Creek's having a very big event coming up in June, so feel free to give us a quick note on that.
Absolutely, thanks. June 6th, we're having a big community-wide festival on our property, 1:00 to 9:00 p.m. It's free for anybody, if you have a local business, or yourself an artist or artisan. We have free booth space, free attractions, the whole event is free. That's 300 Chick Road, Poplar Creek, just down the road, and everyone is welcome to join us, we'd love to have you. Thanks. Would you pray with me, please? Father, we know on so many levels how blessed we are to be here, blessed to be a part of a community like this, to have freedoms to pray aloud like we do here. We're so grateful for the leaders in this room and those who aren't. God, be with them, give them wisdom and insight on how to lead, and how to lead us best. God, we are so grateful for this community, the many blessings we have, and as we think of those worldwide who are facing tragedy, and heartache, and struggle, God, be with them, give them protection and comfort, God. As we gather tonight, may we sense your guidance, your leading in wisdom, and how to govern this community best. Father, we are so grateful for the many different faces and personalities that make up this great community, and we ask that you would be present in this meeting tonight. And lastly, Father, we pray that you would bless the Blackhawks and not Anaheim at 8:00 p.m. Let me pray all these things in your name, and everyone said. Amen.
Amen. Thank you Pastor Simkins.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Scott, did we try to get some more chairs, or are you folks okay standing back there? Okay. All right, moving right along. We'll go through the consent agenda. All items listed with an asterisk are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. There are no separate discussion on these items. At this point, is there anything that any board member would like to add to the consent agenda?
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to add F3 and F5 to the consent agenda.
Does anybody have an issue with that?
Not at all.
Mr. President, I'd like to add item A2 to the consent agenda.
Anything else?
I was going to ask that item 1 under, Mr. President, under Finance at Golf, but I understand that there are some questions, so I'm going to withdraw that request.
Okay. I entertain a motion to amend the consent agenda to include the board and committee minutes from May 7, 2015, the bill's list, item under Planning and Zoning Committee, A2, Tanzania subdivision rezoning, item D1, under License and Ordinance, for an amplifier permit, item E1, under Police and Health, report the July temporary traffic light, items F1, F2, F3, and F5, Public Works Staff Replacements Vehicle, 2015 Crack Ceiling Project bids, Verizon Wireless License Agreement, and Cross-Connection Control Agreement.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Trustee Cameron, seconded by Trustee Daney. The clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Aaron's?
Yes.
Cameron?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
Yes.
Daney?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
That motion carries. I'll entertain a motion to approve the amended consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Trustee Ranky, seconded by Trustee Daney. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Aaron's?
Yes.
Cameron?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
Yes.
Daney?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
That motion carries. Next item we have on our list is Treasurer's Report, there's none for this evening. Moving right along to the President's Report, the first thing that we have is an annual event here. Oh, back up just a second, I need to entertain a motion to approve the board minutes that were not on our last agenda for April 21st, 2015.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Trustee Cameron, seconded by Trustee Carbonaro. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Aaron's?
Yes.
Cameron?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
Yes.
Daney?
Upstain.
Hopkins?
Upstain.
Ranky?
Yes.
Motion carries. Now we'll move on to the President's Report. As I was saying, every year we have an annual event where our historic building plaque summary, where Bartlett Historical Society presents plaques to individual deserving homes, and I would turn it over to Mr. Place.
Do you want me to read the things from over here?
Please, while you're reading the two, it's called individuals, I can give some information on the home.
You got the names, okay. Okay, the first home we have is an eclectic colonial, and it's Chris and Gillian Reed.
This is the house up here. From an example, aside people that took the colonial reliving, except for the office market, if you ever go home, it otherwise rigidly symmetrical. How's that? It's typical of the colonial style, with double hung windows lined up horizontally and vertically. The front door is covered by a portico, having a gabled roof with a curved underside supported by columns. The entry door is topped by a fan light and bracketed by side lights, and again, these are all typical of the colonial revival style. Home was built in 1928. I could have our homeowners come up?
Carrie, we need a picture of all of them at the end?
We could do that with all of them, not as an individual.
The next home is a bungalow cottage owned by Viola Vlasic.
Okay, this home was constructed in Moreau's Crestview subdivision. It's a small house variation on the basic bungalow pattern with a gabled side entry front porch attached to a hip-roofed main building. Unlike most Bartlett bungalows, there are no dormers to light the attic. This home has been much modified from its original appearance, but it retains its overall shape and window arrangements. Home was constructed 1926.
Next on our list, we have a Cape Cod home owned by Donna Merritt.
Donna was not able to be here this evening, in that she's indisposed, but we've asked one of our Historical Society members to come up and accept the plaque for her. This house was built in 1954, it is a minimal traditional home in the Cape Cod style. Cape Cod home, besides being a beloved early New England folkhouse form and symbol of colonial America, provides some of the most economical cubic space that can be built. The home is also a variation on the basic minimal traditional home, a transitional type which was common from the mid-1930s to the mid-50s, that's before ranch-style houses came in as a big deal. The twin dormers here are the hallmarks of the Cape Cod style, but on this home they only illuminate an unfinished attic. The living area is all on one floor.
Next we have a bungalow owned by Bruce and Kathy Harrell.
Okay, this one-story frame bungalow sports a hip roof and includes exposed raptors under the eaves, a typical craftsman detail. Hip dormers, front and rear, interrupt the roof slope. Dormers were added to many bungalows to provide space, light, and ventilation at the attic, thus making them part of the house. Bungalow was the dominant style for smaller houses built throughout the country from 1905 through around 1930.
And next we have a mid-century modern home owned by David and Debbie Dortmund.
In the 1950s, America was undergoing really big changes. The new homes being built were quite unlike earlier, more elaborate styles. They were, in a word, "modern." This basic ranch home, the basic ranch home is low slung in place so the whitest aspect faces the street. Roofs are low gabled or even flat, as in this home, with white overhang and walls that include that. Most modern of features, the picture window.
And finally, we have a home owned by Lori Byrd.
Okay, this home was built in 1894, and has what we refer to as a gable front and wing. A gable front and wing home is an American vernacular style, commonly built by local craftsmen without an architect. Unlike most other examples that are seen around Bartlett, this home has a complex roof form with a hip roof on the wing, and a front gable that is flush with the wing on both front and back. Most such houses are T-shaped with the gable end projecting beyond the wing. The gable portion is stepped, that is, the peak of the gable roof is higher than that of the wing portion. Enclosed front porch is a later addition, probably replacing an earlier open porch. We need to make thanks to our homeowners, and we have them come up for a photo.
That would be great, if everybody could come up for a photo, I think we do it every year, so.
Our owners come back up again for just a moment, and we'll take a group picture here with the plaques.
And while they're coming up, I'd just like to thank Gary Place and the Bartlett Historical Society for doing this every year. It's very important to maintain our history in the town, we thank you very much, Gary. Thank you. Steve? Well, there are two public works gentlemen, or... So the proclamation, National Public Works Week, May 17th through 23rd, 2015. Whereas public work services provided in our community are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives, whereas the support of understanding and informed citizens is vital to the efficient operation of public work systems and programs, such as water, sewers, streets, highways, public buildings, and solid waste collection, and I would add snow removal, whereas the health, safety, and comfort of the community greatly depends on these facilities and services, and whereas the quality and effectiveness of these facilities, as well as their planning, design, and construction, is vitally dependent upon the efforts and skill of the public works officials, and whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel of public works departments is supported when citizens understand the importance of public works, and whereas the year 2015 marks the 55th Annual National Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association. Therefore, I, Kevin Wallace, Village President, do hereby proclaim May 17th through the 23rd, 2015, as National Public Works Week in the Village of Bartlett, and I will still proclaim with no objections. Next, we have some liquor license approvals. The following license, we're intending to approve for renewal. What do we got? Yeah, I got the new one. Gap Sparta Food Service, Inc., BBA Savory Restaurant, and Pancake Cafe, Class B, Class F, Barrows Restaurant, doing business as El Faro Restaurant Number Two. And added to the agenda this evening were Class A, J.C. Mexican Restaurant, and Class F, Tokyo Steakhouse. I do intend to renew those licenses. Next thing we have on our agenda is under question and answer. At this point, is there anything the board has questions about? Hearing none, we'll move right along to the town hall portion of the meeting. At this point in the meeting, it allows anybody in the audience the opportunity to address the board. Please step up to the podium if you want to address the board, and try to keep your comments to three minutes.
Richard Lewis, 868 Braintree. I've been given the situation regarding the 59 and Sterns intersections improvement, a lot of thought, and got to thinking that after the last meeting, we had stopped thinking about how to optimize the situation we find ourselves in, and it had become an emotional argument. So I just took a step back and tried to look at it with a fresh mind, and with a sense of compromise. First, I tried to put myself in the shoes of the drivers that come to Walgreens and the Brewster Creek Shopping Center, and determined that we can categorize these drivers into two categories. Those that are local to the area and know the shopping center and the intersection well, and those that do not know the area or come through infrequently. And I think the behavior of these two types of drivers may vary quite a bit. For the local driver, adjustment to the changes made, that may be made, are really just about changing habits, as long as the changes are not so significant that they stop coming into the shopping area. For the non-local driver, it's about making sure the intersection and access to the shopping area is not so confusing that they don't know how to navigate. So with that in mind, I thought, why do the drivers now, currently, choose to try to make a left-hand turn into the shopping area off of Sterns Road? It's not uncommon for those, now, for those drivers to get stuck trying to make that turn, and they often hear about it from the other drivers, all in the ways that we understand of how drivers let their feelings known. It is just an uncomfortable and nerve-wracking situation for a driver to be in. For the local driver, I can think of only one reason to attempt this turn when coming eastbound on Sterns or northbound on 59, and that is to avoid spending extra time stuck at the traffic light at the intersection. If coming eastbound on Sterns, I may not get into the turn lane because it's frequently backed up, and I may miss getting through the light. For the northbound driver on 59, I can perhaps avoid a red light on 59 by making a right on red onto Sterns and avoid the delay. This reasoning is simply impatience and habit. Now, for those traveling southbound on 59, it's probably easier to turn into the mall at Norwood, but if I do come all the way to the intersection, then my only option is to try to turn in off of Sterns or come down Braintree and cut through the neighborhood. For the non-local driver, we have a different issue. These folks coming in any direction simply do not know how to get into the mall, and they often presume the entrance is on Sterns. I see these people, often, because they're turning around in my driveway, turning around to get back to Sterns so that they can get back to the mall. They have turned, again, onto Sterns expecting an entrance to the mall, found it to be blocked with traffic, and come down Braintree. They turn onto Braintree assuming that there's a back entrance to the mall, and by the time they get three or four houses in, they decide it's better to turn around and go back. You may think this is all leading to support for Option 2 that we've discussed, with the turn lane into the mall, but it is not. The issue and safety concerns that have been brought up in the meetings are very valid, and the current and predicted traffic really leads us to the need for dual turn lanes on Sterns. Instead, I would suggest a slightly modified Option 3. A relatively inexpensive modification will, I believe, make all the difference. Directional signage will make a huge difference in Option 3 being successful. On eastbound Sterns, west of 59, put up signage that reads, "For access to Walgreens and the shopping center, use the center turn lane and immediate right into the center." For northbound 59 traffic, erect signage that clearly reads, "Entrance to Walgreens and Shopping Center is located one-half block past the upcoming intersection." And for southbound 59, erect signage far enough down the road that reads, "For entrance to Walgreens and the shopping center, turn left at upcoming traffic light on Norwood." Use appropriate graphics on this signage to really emphasize how the driver should navigate. I've seen these types of signs in other villages and have personally found them to be very, very useful. Now, Option 3 does allow for exit from the shopping center onto, left, onto Sterns during non-peak hours, but there is certainly still a lot of lanes to cross to get out, and is no doubt a safety concern. Not only when traffic is backed up past the driveway on Sterns, but when some drivers try to be nice and let someone out, the next thing you know, they are stuck blocking traffic. So again, why do drivers put themselves in that potential situation? Well, it's because they don't have much of an option. It's either do that, or cut through a residential neighborhood and come out on Braintree, which, by the way, at peak hours, isn't a whole lot better than the driveway at the shopping center, or try to make a left turn out of, from Norwood onto 59, and I think we all agree that that just isn't a safe option about 95% of the time. So Option 3 is tied to two things here. One is a traffic light at Norwood and 59, and, again, I can't emphasize the importance of this enough, directional signage. For instance, at the exit from Walgreens parking lot, and by that I mean the parking lot directly in front of Walgreens, there should be a sign, large sign, that says, "Easy exit at stoplight, 300 feet or whatever distance it is," with a big arrow pointing towards Norwood. Most drivers that see that there is very much traffic at all on Sterns will make the rational decision to go to the stoplight if they know it's there. And during the times when there isn't much traffic, such as late evening hours, the driver can still get out of the mall via the driveway onto Sterns. And at least one or two other signs in the mall parking lot would be helpful in this regard. Now finally, this brings me to the issue you know I can't just ignore, and that is the traffic on Norwood and Braintree, and the potential to close Norwood. So I've given this some serious thought. I've also given some thoughts to Trustee Cameron's comments a couple of weeks ago that completely closing Norwood would force drivers from his area of the subdivision onto Sterns, right into the intersection area that we are concerned with. I'm going to tell you that he may very well be right. I cannot stand here and definitively say that the benefit of completely closing Norwood outweighs the risk of forcing additional traffic from his section of the neighborhood onto Sterns. However, I have no reservation whatsoever in saying that closing eastbound traffic on Norwood is essential, regardless of the selected option for Sterns and 59, and regardless of the traffic light on Norwood and 59. For Trustee Cameron's area, for instance, it will be a bit of an inconvenience to turn right onto 59 and to come back to Auburn to get home, but trying to get onto 59 from Norwood is not particularly difficult, and will only be made easier with the traffic light. We sincerely hope that our neighbors and friends in that section of the neighborhood understand that we had never asked for them to be inconvenienced in this way if we had a better option for safety and serenity of the Norwood and south Braintree area. So in conclusion, I believe the combination of Option 3 with the additional directional signage, in combination with a stoplight at Norwood and 59, and with the closing of eastbound Norwood at the mall junction, is the optimal decision for the problem we are faced with as the traffic congestion in our area continues to grow. Does it eliminate all safety and traffic concerns? No, it does not, but I believe it gives us the best risk-to-benefit ratio, given the variables that we have to live with in this situation. I realize tonight's agenda doesn't include decisions about the traffic light and closing of Norwood, but I suggest that they very much go hand-in-hand. Conclude all these issues tonight, and you will have the advantage of moving on to other important village issues, and more importantly, you won't have to listen to any more long-winded comments from me. I would be glad to answer any questions if you should happen to have any clarification of my comments, and good luck with your decision this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis.
My name is Javier Milan, I'm a senior consultant with KLOA Incorporated, and we were the ones who did the traffic study for Walgreens in 2012, I believe. We, like I said, we conducted the traffic study, and we analyzed intersection of Sterns Road and Brewster Creek Access Drive, and at the time, it operated at acceptable levels of service, as well as in the future projections. However, we were made aware of IDOT's plans to widen 59 and Sterns, and what it entails, and I just wanted to just point out a few of the things that we see with the original plans from IDOT. The proposed plan basically introduces a raised barrier median extending from 59 east to Braintree Lane, therefore limiting the accessibility of the Brewster Creek Shopping Center and the Dacre Center to right-in, right-out movements. This will reduce the viability of the shopping center, making it less desirable for customers to patronize. It forces inbound traffic from the west that is destined to the Brewster Creek Shopping Center to perform a left turn on 59 if they're aware that, you know, that's what they should be doing, and then a right turn movement into the shopping center. Conversely, it forces outbound traffic that would like to travel east on Sterns to actually find a circuitous alternate route, potentially cutting through Braintree Lane, which you heard. This will increase also the number of left-turning movement out of the full Ingress-Egress Access Drive on 59 or on Norwood Lane, and these additional left-turn movements will occur at two unsignaled intersections at the moment, in which the major road, 59, carries higher through traffic than Sterns Road and at a higher speed. So for those reasons, I really would like, or encourage you to actually look into those alternative solutions and come up to resolution.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Art Prashanik, 925 Auburn Lane. Please ignore everything Mr. Lewis said here tonight, unless he agrees to run for office someday. He's done a great job representing the neighborhood over the last couple of months, I'm glad to see him get involved in this, and he, although he was representing the people on Braintree the most, I think he did a pretty good job communicating with you guys and being able to look at different sides of things. I live on the opposite side of the subdivision, and I've been using that shopping center and intersection for years. Matter of fact, those of us that have been in Bartlett for many years, remember when Bartlett Road and Sterns was the most dangerous intersection in Bartlett, when it was one lane going back and forth and you played chicken with any car making a left turn. Now that intersection is Bartlett, or 59 and Sterns Road. And the last couple of weeks, after seeing these discussions here, I've noticed the traffic at rush hours and at the slower times. And at the rush hours, you are taking your life in your hand, turning left into the shopping center or out of the shopping center. Talking to many people in the village, they completely avoid that intersection. I understand the need that the shopping center relies on traffic to get them in there, that intersection is just getting busier and busier, and the type of stores that are in there will bring people to that shopping center, so I think less weight needs to be given to something like that than for the safety of the residents that live in Bartlett and that travel through Bartlett. You brought in an expert to look at the situation, as the board frequently does for different matters like this, and they recommended Option A. The state came up with Option A, and most people would say, "Well, you went through the trouble of bringing in the experts, why aren't you listening to them?" And I understand you're giving consideration to the shopping center owner for that, but what does that say about the board if you ignore the experts? Why would you bring in any experts for anything else if you're not going to listen to them with something as important as this? I urge you, I don't know if you're going to make a decision tonight, but public safety should be the utmost thing on your minds for this. Most of you guys are in a business that life or death is not part of your decision-making, with the exception of maybe Trustee Cameron, who's a doctor, and let's all hope he puts safety ahead of profits. But that's what you're doing tonight here, or whenever you vote on this. You're looking at safety versus some profits for the shopping center. Profits can always be replaced, a person's life or an injury cannot be redone. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Prashanik.
Yes, my name is Sam Bartoloni, I'm a resident of Bartlett for almost 40 years. I live at 1618 Fire Hills Drive now, and without getting long-winded, I've seen this town grow, and I would just like to say that I do want to support Option C, is, from what I've seen and studied on it, is being the best and viable option. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor Wallace, board members. My name is Doug Hanson, store manager of the Walgreens here, and my pharmacy manager as well, Roshab Shukla. On behalf of Walgreens and our store, Route 59 and Sterns Road, we want to thank you for your staff, thank you and your staff for reviewing this matter, working to keep the Sterns Road entrance to viable access to our store at the Brewster Creek Shopping Center. As you're aware, Walgreens made a significant investment in the community with this location. Walgreens selects... Walgreens selects site locations that optimize our success, but also ensure that we are the most convenient retailer for the neighbors that we serve. To the extent that it is no longer convenient to access our store, not only would this store be challenged, but our ability to be the convenient healthcare and daily living needs retailer that we've become to the neighborhoods that we operate in. We understand that you are currently reviewing the several options, Option A, B, and C, and our preferred option would be including a left-hand turn lane onto Sterns Road from the shopping center, as this would be the most beneficial to our business by improving an already safe access point. We understand that, you know, improvements need to be made to the intersection for safety purposes, so we agree with everybody, what everybody said here. So Option C is definitely something in our interest. In the past, changes to pedestrian access has forced us to reevaluate proposed new stores or existing stores in other communities. We hope that the new design of this entrance will include a multi-directional access point to the shopping plaza and our store to help us retain our strong performance. And we appreciate you understanding of our concerns and everybody else's, and, you know, thanks for really weighing this option out.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Martin McManaman. I live at 1192 Independence Drive in Bartlett. Independence Drive is kind of a cut-through street, unfortunately. I didn't know that when I bought my house, but it is. When trains back up on 59, everybody all of a sudden cuts down, cuts down Independence to make it to Struckman and heads around down to Bartlett Road, and around to Schick or wherever they go from there to avoid the train. My biggest thing with the plans, I am not in favor of Plan A or Plan One, Plan A, because of the fact that you're just adding more traffic to 59. Pulling out of that, of that shopping center now and making a left turn is almost a nightmare at any time of day. I frequent that shopping center every weekend. I would say my wife frequents that Walgreens every day, whether I like it or not, and I don't think we've ever used 59 to go there because it is a hassle. We do always come up, I always cut through the Dominic Shopping Center, just cut right across the parking lots there and back, right or wrong, that's the way I go. I never have had a problem. I don't travel that intersection very often during, during high-traffic hours, but I do know that when there is no traffic, you can't make a left turn onto 59. And I also know that 59 is just a nightmare of a street in general for traffic, so adding any more traffic to it isn't going to help, and adding any traffic lights anywhere in any of our communities isn't going to help relieve or get people where they want to go. I know it sounds silly saying, "Oh, it's just a little inconvenient," but in today's times, convenience is everything. Seconds, minutes are everything, and that 59, if it's backed up, you don't need to be spending an hour going to Walgreens from two, three blocks away. Yes, you can walk, but if you're driving, you don't need to spend a half hour trying to get through the light. It's nice and easy to go around, come right up Sterns and drive in. So just for more convenience to the people, I think you should use Option Two or Three, and that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. McManaman. Would anybody else like to address the board at this time? Hearing none, we will move right along in our next agenda item. Next, we have standing committee reports. First standing committee report is under Planning and Zoning Committee Chairman Ranky.
Thank you, Mr. President. Two items tonight. The first item is Artis Senior Living of Bartlett Final Subdivision and PUD Site Plan Lot Number One. And with that, I'll turn that over to staff.
Thank you, Trustee Ranky. This is the subdivision up for a final vote. You have seen this in committee and seen it as a preliminary, and now for a final. Artis is requesting the approval of the three-lot subdivision and approval of the final plan for their Artis Senior Living Memory Care Facility, which will be located on Lot One. The final subdivision and final PUD plan are in substantial compliance with what was approved by your preliminary plan. Plan Commission reviewed this project and recommended approval. It was last seen at your committee of the whole meeting on May 5th, 2015, and before you, there is an ordinance for approval of the final PUD and final PUD plan for the Artis Senior Living.
With that, I move to approve ordinance 2015-37, did you say? Thirty-seven, an ordinance granting approval of a final type of subdivision and a final PUD site plan for Lot One for Artis Senior Living.
Second. Moved by Trustee Ranky, seconded by Trustee Cammerer. Is there any discussion?
I'll reiterate my concerns from the, when we had the preliminary concept plan. Right-in, right-out is problematic for any business. I mean, it is. I mean, that's part of the problem with the issue at Sterns and 59, but I think it's particularly problematic here, and I'm concerned about what Lot Two is going to morph into. We don't know what it is, but we're creating landlocked parcel, so, you know, because of the traffic issue in Lot Two, I'm going to vote no.
Excuse me, but I'm having a hard time hearing Trustee Ranky.
Well, then you're in luck because I'm done.
Well, then I'd like to just reiterate my stance, and I'm very happy to see Artis coming in. I think it's a well-needed facility. I think that the idea of the right-in and right-out has been addressed, and the petitioner feels quite capable of making that work and sees no barriers to that. As far as what other businesses or entities will come into the existing lots, we don't know, but we know that the place has been sitting vacant for thirty to thirty-five years, and I don't know that, unless something has developed and started, I don't know that anything else is going to come into it. So, welcome to the community. I will be voting yes, obviously.
Just to give you a little background, when this came before the Plan Commission, we discussed this at considerable length, and there were a couple of concerns that they had, you know, as you had addressed with the traffic right-in, right-out. And it was, I believe, it's my understanding, that IDOT actually would not allow any deceleration lanes or, isn't that correct?
That's correct.
Right. So consequently, we had the petitioner before us, and there were questions also asked about what they could do with the adjoining lot, and again, there wasn't, they really didn't have any idea what was happening there, but their intent was to have some type of medical purposes behind that. So it wasn't a unanimous recommendation for approval by the Plan Commission, but the majority did recommend the approval of this by the board.
Yeah, and I'll just reiterate my statement from before. With this ruling from IDOT, we're very fortunate to have a business there, because I think it's good that a business like yours would be able to function in that environment, and maybe down the road, we can work out something with one of the neighbors, and it'll be a better situation, so.
Another more from me.
Then, is there any other discussion? The clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Aaronson.
Could you repeat the motion?
I move to approve the Artis Senior Living of Bartlett Final Subdivision and PUD Site Plan for Lot Number One, and that's ordinance 2015-37.
Trustee Cammerer?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
No.
Danny?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ranky?
No.
That motion carries.
Okay, the second item that we have on planning and zoning for this evening is the Route 59 and Sterns Road Intersection Resolution, an IDOT letter of intent. With that, Jim, I'll turn that over to you.
Thank you for coming again, gentlemen.
Thank you, Trustee Ranky. As this subject has been discussed quite frequently over the last several months, the intent tonight, as was discussed at the last committee of the whole meeting, was to forward a resolution to vote on the alternative for what the east leg of the intersection design would be. The original alternative design received three supporting votes at the committee level. The first revised design had two supporting votes, and the second revised design had two supporting votes. You've heard from all the parties, residents, shopping center owners, and businesses around that area, as well as other citizens. Just to let you know that the letter of intent also commits the village to improvements to that intersection totaling forty-two thousand seven hundred and twenty-three dollars, and they include a shared path, a sidewalk, and a preemption light for the traffic signal at 59 and Sterns Road. The motions, or there is a resolution in front of you, and then there's also a village attorney's memo that spells out the other two options. So the resolution basically authorizes the mayor to sign the letter of intent, and then as the options, depending on which one's approved, we need to designate to IDOT on the last page of that, that we accept those three additional alternatives, as well as spell out which option they, that the village wants them to proceed to the Phase Two Design Phase with. So that's where it's at right now. If you have any questions, we do have our traffic consultant, as well as our Director of Public Works, who will try to answer any questions, if you have any.
For the record, I would like to know what changed the default option from one to
As discussing this with staff at IDOT and with DuPage County, the original design, as everybody knows, includes the, included a barrier median on both the east and west leg of Sterns Road. That design was reviewed and commented on. The Village of Bartlett sent a letter to DuPage County asking for revision based on some input at the public hearing that were received from the shopping center owner, as well as some of the other businesses. DuPage County also commented on that. On the west leg, they asked to open up the median at the Home Depot Shopping Center entrance, and that was something that was incorporated into the design. And DuPage County came back with a design that I will call Option Two in your packet, which is the left turn into the shopping center and only one left turn southbound, rather than the dual left. And that's, at that time, since the village requested it and DuPage County prepared that design, IDOT waits for no man. I found that out also in this process, or no woman. And they went into a preliminary Phase One design, including what I will call Option Two, and it was the east leg with the only single left turn lane and the west leg with the opening at the Home Depot entrance. And that's where they're at right now in terms of their Phase One design, and that's why they've sent us that letter of intent. And if we want to change that Option Two for the Phase Two design, we need to sign this letter of intent and direct them to go back to whichever option is chosen.
Just out of curiosity, when you say the village sent a letter, who was, who was the village?
Well, the village, the mayor sent a letter asking them for the change. That was sent to all the trustees. That change was sent to DuPage County, as well as to IDOT engineers, and then they came back with the revised change. I can say that the mayor's letter did not specify eliminating the dual left turn lanes. That was a design choice by the traffic engineers at both IDOT and DuPage County.
Before we get too far afield, I move to approve Resolution 2015-39.
Thirty-nine.
Thirty-nine. A resolution approving the letter of intent between IDOT and the Village of Bartlett for the Route 59 and Sterns Road Intersection Improvement Project and Preferred Design for the east leg of said intersection, and for purposes of the record, I'll reference the original IDOT design, Option One.
I'll second that.
Moved by Trustee Ranky, seconded by Trustee Hopkins. Is there any discussion?
Does he, did he just propose a resolution to approve the original IDOT design?
Yes.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Coulter, could I have a word with you? I just, I want to talk very briefly about, and I don't want to beat this, beat this to death, because we've all talked about this quite a bit, but I just want to make sure that I'm clear in my mind, because I know we had this conversation last time. It was your recommendation to us that the original plan is the preferred, is your preferred plan of the three. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And that's because?
It optimizes the overall safety of the intersection area, and it so happens that the Brewster Creek Access falls within the functional intersection area of the town of Sterns Road.
Thank you. And you had also suggested that all three of those options are safer than what we have now.
I've noted that previously, too, yes.
I need to ask, you've looked at all three options, correct?
Yes.
I would think you had. If you had to compromise from Option One, what would be your choice?
Well, the third option, and I'm not sure what you're calling that now, I guess that would be Option Three. I've heard C and Three. It still provides the dual left turn lanes westbound, which minimizes the queuing that occurs during the off-peak, when presumably, if you don't choose Option One, when you would allow left turns out of Brewster Creek Shopping Center. So that's an advantage. With the dual left turn lanes westbound, it minimizes stacking, doesn't block the Brewster Creek access drive for that outbound movement. It allows the west, the east leg of Sterns Road to operate more efficiently. It's a better level of service, less delay, less queuing in all lanes, not just the left turn lanes. And still allows for U-turns from Sterns Road to access, access to shopping center if someone not familiar with the shopping center access, happens to be on Sterns on the east leg and needs to get to the shopping center. There's a mechanism for them to do so.
Now, let me ask if we're eastbound on Sterns, and if we're looking at Option One, the, what I see is that we would, if we wanted to enter eastbound, if we were eastbound, what I see is we'd have to make a U-turn at the end of the median and go back west, or, as was alluded to this evening, we could turn on to Braintree, pull into your driveway, back out, come back around and go westbound on Sterns and get into the strip shopping center. That is not the case with Option Three.
No.
Option One would allow you to make a U-turn at Braintree. Option Three would allow you to make a U-turn at Braintree or in the median, from the median west of Braintree.
Yeah. All right, now, I'm a resident. I live in the Village of Bartlett. You know, hypothetically, my home is not located in this area, but I need to be serviced by that Walgreens, and I want to proceed westbound down Sterns. I want access to Walgreens. So now I can pull into Walgreens without a problem, but when I leave, I can't exit eastbound on Sterns. I have to make a left, a right turn. I have to go up to Route 59. Now I have to make another right turn and potentially go down Norwood, drive down to Braintree, come back down Braintree, and then exit to come east on Sterns.
The advantage in my mind of Option One with the original design and Option Three, which still provides the two westbound dual left turn lanes, during the peak hours, where left turns would be restricted anyway, under any of these alternatives or options. With two westbound left turn lanes and with stacking anticipated not to block access from Brewster Creek Shopping Center, you still from Brewster Creek Shopping Center, you still have the option, if you're heading eastbound, to enter the inner left turn lane of the two westbound left turn lanes, make a U-turn with a protected green arrow, and head back east on Sterns Road.
Well, I appreciate the fact that you looked at this and, believe me, I'm not disputing the fact that we have a plan here that is somewhat workable. But I believe that we have to reach a compromise. And with that, you know, I am lending my support towards Option Three.
With regards to safety, I don't know if, I'd actually like to address a question to the police chief if we could. So Chief, it's my understanding that the information that you provided to us at a previous meeting concerning the accidents that have taken place at the Sterns Road and 59, as I recall, the majority of the accidents were actually in the intersection proper of Sterns and 59. They weren't at the exit of Brewster Creek and Walgreens. Is that correct?
That's very correct, yeah. We did a study the last three years, and the last three years we had approximately 172 to 175 accidents at the generalized intersection of that. Almost all of them were in the intersection proper. In other words, in the middle of the intersection of Sterns and 59. That's correct. The vast majority take place in the actual proper intersection.
So only a very small amount of people actually have, at least up to this point in time, have been involved in an accident exiting out of Brewster Creek?
Twelve percent.
Twelve percent.
Approximately seven a year. Twenty in the last three years.
Thank you.
Well, I would think that more people pass through the intersection than pass by the mall. So I don't know that I necessarily follow that, that argument. But one of the things, while we are talking to staff, Administrator Solmans and I had a discussion last week and you had some thoughts and I, I think it would be important to share those.
My concern was these last several meetings, we have looked at the access into the shopping center repeatedly, and I thought the focus was getting a little bit off the intersection itself. And when this first came in, we looked at it and the chief and the public works director and certainly our traffic engineer reiterated that the benefit of this is we have dual lefts on every single portion of this intersection. And that was really what, what Kent said repeatedly is going to make this safer. And Option Two is the one option that does not allow for the dual lefts heading west, going south. So certainly Option Three allows that and Option One allows that. And I think keeping the integrity of the dual lefts at all the intersection portions is critical.
I've heard that a few times, so.
Mr. Tenjus, what are your thoughts?
I would echo what Chief and Valerie said. Option One is, you know, as Brent said, is safest, but when you're looking at trying not to impact the businesses that are right there, I think Option Three is a good compromise. It allow, it maintains integrity of the main intersections, Sterns and 59, but allows four to left turns out, so.
Okay, thank you.
Option Three is going to allow me to, oops, I drove past the egress at Brewster Creek, so now I can make a U-turn in front of Braintree. How close is that U-turn going to be where I'm going to actually be bumping into traffic coming off of Braintree?
Well, you'll, Option Three will actually allow you to do the U-turn right at the access point. There'll be a left turn lane going into the daycare, so you'll actually be able to do a left turn right at that point. It's got to be a safe clearing in order for someone to make that U-turn, whether it's at the daycare or Braintree, but they can make that U-turn.
Since we were talking hypothetically, Chief, this is addressed to you. What we have at this intersection is an anomaly.
I'm having a hard time hearing you, trustee, I'm sorry.
It's okay. What we have here at this intersection is an anomaly. We have, it's an anomaly, different than anybody else. We've expanded, I.DOT has expanded Route 59 from two lanes to five, and they want to do it to six or seven. And we have four egresses on Sterns Road that are less than 150 feet from a U.S. state route. These are the working parts that you might have been talking about before when you had mentioned there's a lot of working parts in this intersection. I find it ironic that the first option was to get rid of all four of those egresses because they contribute to the problem. So if we reopen this back up, we're really not solving any problems. We're trying to come up with different mechanisms to allow people to travel safely, not only the business owners, but the 41,000 people that live in town and the people who pass by us. Because if you're not aware, 390, which connects to 290, which connects to I-90, 390 dumps into the Sterns Expressway and also connects to the Randall Road Expressway. And if you don't think it's an expressway, you can go out there and rush out of traffic and see it's bumper to bumper like the rest of them. Nobody is going to let you in to turn left, make a U-turn. Why do we want to allow that, in your opinion? Sorry.
Sounds like a great question for the board. My main concern is keeping those dual lefts in all corners. Sterns and 59 proper is the most dangerous intersection in the 30 years I've worked here. I've seen too many fatalities in an intersection, much more so I've seen too many significant life-impering injuries in an intersection. For the last 25 years, we've been asking I.DOT to look at that and, and create dedicated dual left turn lanes in all directions with a dedicated turn signal that protects the turn throughout the movement, throughout the intersection. We always thought if we could do that, we'll save lives in this town. They've done that. And, and that's all we've ever asked for. We think it consists, we'll considerably make that intersection safer. If you want to start backing this up and talk, I mean, there's always unintended consequences for businesses and residential area and the whole bit. My emphasis was always on the center of the intersection where people have been dying and having their lives altered significantly. Options One and, I guess, Three have corrected that situation. Whether you do One or Three or Two is depending on the totality of the board weighing a lot of ulterior perspectives that are valid in this town. And that's what boards are for.
Thank you.
Can we touch on some traffic counts before the bridge went in on Sterns Road and after?
I don't know if we actually did a study on that. I'm sure we could find one. I think we did, but it, just experiential knowledge would tell you Sterns has gotten a lot busier since they put the bridge in, yes.
Do you think, I think Mr. Coulter might be able to answer this question.
I'm sorry. This is for me.
A little bit better. Mr. Coulter?
Yes.
Do you think when I.DOT originally made this design, they incorporate future traffic flow through that intersection into their decision?
I think their primary emphasis on this intersection was safety. The fact that you also add significant left turn storage capacity with the dual left turn lanes means that by addressing safety and with protected only left turns and the dual lefts, you also increase capacity at the intersection. So the function of the improvement is kind of twofold. I think the primary impetus was the, the safety experience, the adverse safety experience at the intersection.
Do we have any traffic counts for 20, 30 years down the road?
That was not part of the design scope for the I.DOT improvement.
Okay.
It often on safety projects, they'll look at, at an immediate design year to get the project in place. But I can tell you that, again, from a capacity standpoint, they're adding capacity at this intersection without adding through lanes, which in the future may be a distinct possibility. This is about as much as they can do at this point in time with the intersection.
And in your opinion, what is this, just to reiterate, the double, keeping the dual left turn lanes on all directions of that intersection is the single most element that maintains the safety and integrity of that intersection?
Safety and by integrity meaning capacity, yes.
Keeping the traffic flowing, yeah.
Yes.
Yep. Okay, thank you.
Well, before you sit down, you thought this was going to be easy, though. Before you sit down, my big concern with Option Number Three is this notion of diverting all traffic into the parking lot of the daycare center. It seems problematic to me. I went out there on a number of occasions and kind of looked at the parking lot and how people parked there and the kids in that parking lot. And it just seems particularly problematic to me. I mean, how do we resolve that issue? It, it sounds like there's a number of people who are interested in Option Number Three. Okay. Well, how do we deal with funneling all of the mall traffic, which is, according to these folks, you know, overwhelming, through the parking lot of a daycare center?
The, the entrance to the, to the daycare center is one-way only. It's a, it's a one-way entrance off of Sterns. So my recommendation would be to have signing facing traffic that would be turning left or at least thinking about turning left, which could include daycare users and notifying anybody turning left that that entry is for daycare traffic only.
Yeah.
And you'd have to check with your village attorney, but that typically, in my experience and other locations, is something that is enforceable under ordinance. And I think those signs in and of itself, maybe with some supplemental directional signing, would relieve that situation.
So you think then that, that signage would deter the majority of people from driving into the daycare center parking lot and instead pulling a U-turn?
In my opinion, yes. Yep.
And, and the thing that I would suggest, and this is what I was thinking, because I've driven this intersection tons of times, as long as there's dual lefts going north on 59, it is way easier to get into Walgreens from there than it is to go across 59 and turn. So as somebody mentioned before, they're going to change, start changing their habits, but the only people that are coming into that, that shopping center going eastbound on Sterns are people that are either going north on 59 that really are going to make it really difficult for themselves to get in there, or people that are going east on Sterns, which are going to quickly learn that that dual left-hand turn lanes dump the traffic a lot quicker now, and then they'll make a left and a right. So in my opinion, I don't see how people would, with any degree of frequency, attempt to go across 59 and then try to pull a U-turn to go back into the U. And they certainly wouldn't do more than once go through that daycare because it doesn't even line up with the Walgreens entrance. They'd have to actually go through the daycare and then around and then into Walgreens. So, my opinion.
Any other questions? Okay, I'll call the question then.
Hearing none, other clerk, please call the roll. Just to reiterate, we are, because of all the discussion, can you read, read the motion?
Yes. I'm going to go back to the resolution.
This is, just so we know, this is voting yes or no on Option One. Is that good enough?
Yes.
Okay. Other clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Ehrens?
No.
Cammer?
No.
Carbonaro?
Yes.
Danny?
No.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
Ty?
No. So that motion?
The case, may I make a motion?
Yep. That motion does not carry.
I'm sorry?
So that, I just had to reiterate for the record that that motion did not carry. Go ahead.
May I? Then I'll make a motion that the, we approve a resolution authorizing the mayor's signature on the I.DOT letter of intent with the original, with the, with Option Number Three, as we've defined as Option Number Three, intersection design plan for the Route 59 and Sterns intersection.
Second.
It's moved by trustee Danny, seconded by trustee Danny. Is there any discussion?
I'd move to amend that motion to include that we would, the village would be responsible for adding signage at the daycare center entrance. And I'm sure the mall owner, in the interest of safety and cooperation, would be more than happy to assist us with securing the ability to erect those signs.
So we should vote on the amendment first?
I think that's a really, really good idea.
Should I meet the motion? Will I get a second?
Yes.
Moved by trustee Ranky, seconded by trustee Danny. Just to reiterate, the amendment to motion, Option Number Three, would include the requirement for signage to be placed at the daycare facility, restricting traffic through that daycare facility to be patrons only that are picking up children. Is there any discussion about that? Hearing none, other clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Ehrens?
Yes.
Cammer?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
No.
Danny?
Yes.
Hopkins?
No.
Ranky?
Yes.
Amendment carries. And is there any discussion on the amended Option Three with the signage?
So the motion that's on the floor that trustee Danny made is to approve of this resolution, which is Option Three.
And we amended it.
It's now be amended by trustee Ranky. Motion to amend.
Is everybody on the same page? Okay. Other clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Ehrens?
Yes.
Cammer?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
And we're moving on.
Option Three with signage?
No.
Danny?
Yes.
Hopkins?
No.
Ranky?
No.
Yes. That motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. President. That's all we have for planning and zoning this evening.
All right. Thank you Chairman Ranky for the diligence that was involved in all of that. I appreciate your perseverance. Moving along, next on our agenda is under the building committee, Chairman Hopkins. Mr. President, there's nothing to report. Thank you Chairman Hopkins. Next on we have, on our agenda, we have Finance and Golf Committee Chairman Danny.
Thank you, Mr. President. We do have a couple items. The first is.
Why don't we, why don't we pause?
Yeah.
Do you guys mind?
Okay. First item on the agenda is U-46 release of school donation request. And I understand that we are going to have some questions regarding that, but Mr. Polanski, can you please, oh, sorry, just the, yeah. I would think that this is staff. We need some background on this, please. Who, what, where, why?
Let me just give you a little background and Jeff can back that up. In the days of a lot of building permits, this was a fairly common thing. The donations that go to the other taxing districts go directly to them. The board had wanted to have information before they released any of the developed donations to U-46 to go through and see specifically that it was spent on schools in the village of Bartlett and that it be for bricks and mortars as opposed to books and other things. And you can see by the information that U-46 has sent that they have quite a ways to go in terms of catching up, or our donations have quite a ways to go. So seeing that verification of what our ordinance calls for, we went ahead and put it on the agenda and would recommend that you pay out that amount.
Anyone else have any questions, staff? If not, then I move to approve Resolution 2015.
Forty?
Forty. Resolution granting U-46, the U-46 release of school donations and authorizing the release of 192,789,47 cents to U-46 from the developer's deposit fund.
Second.
It's moved by trustee Danny, seconded by trustee Ranky. Is there any discussion on this? Hearing none, other clerk, please call the roll. Moved by trustee Danny, seconded by trustee Ranky. Is there any discussion on this? Hearing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Aaronz?
Yes.
Cammer?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
Yes.
Danny?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
That motion carries.
Okay, then, next item on the agenda is the electricity purchase, and I'm going to ask staff specifically, I believe Paula, please, could you just afford a little background on this?
Can you give us the shocking information here, Paula?
There'll be a lot of funding from, in 2007, ConEd stopped generating electricity and purchased it on the open market and is our transmittal provider. Our enterprise funds, our water pumping, our wastewater treatment plant, and Bartlett Hills are, the electricity for those endeavors are, is at market rates, and so is the electricity in some of our streetlights. So, since 19, since 2007, we've been working with a consortium put together by the mayor's, Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus, and we've been working with Energy Choices to evaluate those accounts and then bid them out for an energy provider. So, we did that recently, and we have two contracts for your review. One is for our water pumping, Bartlett Hills, and the wastewater treatment plant, and then there's a separate one for streetlights. They're calculated at different rates, so they're different contracts. While electricity prices are fairly volatile, seasonally fairly volatile, we are told that this is a good time to take advantage of the markets, because natural gas is at an all-time, not an all-time low, but a 13-year low, and we can provide some stability to our budgets and some cost savings if we can lock in a market rate over the course of those contracts. And so, that is what is before you.
I like it.
May I ask? We have two firms that we're dealing with, Constellation Energy and also Mid-American Energy. Why were there two? Couldn't be combined into one?
Sometimes it is. We end up with the same company, but in this particular case, one had a better price for our wastewater treatment plant and those higher volume accounts, and the second company had a better price for streetlighting, so we broke them apart.
I think you did an outstanding job breaking this down like this, researching all this.
Paul, was there no advantage in going with the 36-month as opposed to the 24-month plan?
When you start going out that far, they kind of tend to creep their prices a little bit more, and it also gives us a chance of, like, you know, there is something that happens in the market. Let's say there is some kind of weather event that would cause those prices to go down, we can take advantage of them.
Okay.
With that being said, I move to authorize the village administrator to enter into an agreement for enterprise accounts with Constellation Energy for the purchase of electricity from December 15, 2015, to December 15, 2017. And. One motion at a time. Yeah, that's what I was just going to ask.
Second.
Moved by trustee Danny, seconded by trustee Cammer. Is there any discussion? If we don't pass this, then we just have to, like, have parties in the dark out at Bartlett Hills.
Intimate candlelight dining.
Would the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Aaronz?
Yes.
Cammer?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
Yes.
Danny?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
That motion carries.
Then lastly, I move to authorize the village administrator to enter into an agreement for streetlighting accounts with Mid-American Energy for the purchase of electricity from December 15, 2015, to December 15, 2017.
Second.
Moved by trustee Danny, seconded by trustee Carbonaro. Is there any discussion?
I just want to make one mention. I think staff did an outstanding job putting all this information together. I know I've gone through this and tried to look at it on my own, and you did an outstanding job.
Fantastic. Hearing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Aaronz?
Yes.
Cammer?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
Yes.
Danny?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
That motion carries.
Oh, I'm done.
Thank you.
Mr. President, that concludes my report for the evening.
Next on our agenda is under license and ordinance committee, Chairman Aaronz.
Already? Oh, well, we have one item under license and ordinance. The Griners are having a party and they needed amplifier permit, but that was taken care of under the consent agenda, and that's all I have for tonight. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you Chairman Aaronz. Next on our agenda is E, police and health committee, Chairman Carbonaro.
Thank you, Mr. President. The only item I had was covered on the consent agenda, nothing to add.
Thank you Chairman Carbonaro. Next, we have item F, public works committee, Chairman Cammer.
Thank you, Mr. President. The only thing that's not under the consent agenda is number four, DuPage River-Salt Creek Work Group intergovernmental agreement. This matter was discussed at the last committee of the whole meeting on May 5. The village's NPDES permit expired on January 3, 2015, and the village is awaiting the IEPAs new phosphorus limits. In the interim, the DuPage River-Salt Creek Work Group has been negotiating with the IEPA to provide special conditions to the NPDES permit of each work group member, which would allow the village to delay the implementation of phosphorus treatment at the village's wastewater treatment plant for 10-plus years. If the village approves the agreement that is before you, the village's annual fees to the work group will increase from $6,575 per year to $31,000 for fiscal year 2015-16, with an annual increase for the village's share of a list of regional projects. However, by executing the agreement, the village will have 10 years rather than three years to implement phosphorus removal, which staff estimates will stave village $1.4 million chemical and operating expenses on phosphorus removal, even after deducting payment of the increased annual dues to the work group. With that, I move the passage of resolution 2015 dash.
Forty-two.
Forty-two, a resolution approving an agreement between the village of Bartlett and the DuPage River-Salt Creek Work Group.
Second.
Moved by trustee Cammer, seconded by trustee Carbonaro. Is there any discussion? The only obvious question that I have is that it was budgeted at $6,575 and now it's at $31,000. Is that, what happened?
The $6,500 was our, what we've been paying to the DuPage River-Salt Creek Work Group. We didn't have the numbers for this special condition until recently, so we're plugging those numbers in now, and we can fit that into our budget.
But in addition to that, we were paying for other chemicals.
Well, we have chemicals at the wastewater treatment plant. It's a membership fee, basically, to be in that DuPage River-Salt Creek Work Group, and because we don't have those large projects that we're paying for right now, the fees have only been about $6,500 a year, but because we're, if the board approves us entering into this agreement, we have to start paying for those projects. So, that's, those are the numbers that we just recently got and can now program in for multiple years, the eight-year program.
So, I didn't follow that, but that's okay.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. I think it's a little bit convoluted, yeah, so, all right. I still, what I heard was, is the $6,575 was the junior membership and the $31,000 is the major membership. Is that kind of close?
Well, nobody has had this, these projects to pay for yet, so everybody that is joining into this agreement will now have their assessments. It's in the packet. Each community has that assessment put onto their, you know, fee, basically, and that helps, that pays for those projects that EPA has said, yes, we'd like to see the rivers improved, and will allow you to defer implementing phosphorus treatment at the wastewater treatment plants, because you're doing all this other work on the rivers.
Very good. Thank you. Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Aaronz?
Yes.
Cammer?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
Yes.
Danny?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
That motion carries.
That's all I have.
Thank you Chairman Cammer. That moves us down on our agenda this evening to new business. Does anybody have any new business they'd like to discuss?
I actually had, I have two items. The first item, I bumped into a fellow municipal attorney over at the courthouse. We were talking about massage establishments, and he reminded me of some relatively recent changes in the law, not too recent, but relatively recent changes in the law that would allow the village of Bartlett to perhaps increase its regulatory authority over massage establishments, and I thought that might be a nice thing for the village staff to take a look at and the village attorney, so that we can make sure our regulations help protect the public, health, safety, welfare, and of course morals.
We are doing that as we speak.
Terrific.
We had a massage ordinance that was preempted by state law, but we were already looking at that, and it's maybe the same municipal attorney that we're speaking of, who I have to have their Wheaton ordinance and their Roselle ordinance.
Absolutely. Terrific.
Thinking the same one.
What a coincidence.
And spoke to him today.
May I say something as well?
Sure.
All right. I'm just curious if we're checking into this from the perspective of a legitimate medical massage therapist working out of a medical clinic.
That's exempt.
I would not want to see limitations put on medical offices in our community that hire massage therapists, you know, in medical therapy.
That's not an issue.
Okay.
They're exempt.
We have clarification with that.
They're exempt, and we actually have something on the books now, and it exempts that currently, but ours licensed the masseuses themselves, and the state said, no, no, you can't do that. We're going to take control of licensing masseuses, but we had some other provisions in there, and we had some issues years ago with the J-Spot and actually took steps to suspend, revoke a license. It was the, called something else before, I have to correct that, and then the business sold after it was revoked, and then it was quiet for a while, and in the meantime municipalities are chipping back at that preemption and carving ways around the license, the masseuses, and more in the line of requiring the business itself to get the license and requirements and basis to suspend and revoke, and we're looking into that as we speak.
So, now would be the time for me to put in an ad for my massage therapist working through my office. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Anything else?
Well, the second item just dawned on me when we were talking about the signage for that third option, that we're going to put these signs that say that daycare center patrons only, or whatever verbiage we have fashioned. You know, if that's something that we're willing to do with regards to the daycare center, then I think perhaps it's time for us to think about that type of signage for brain trick. It's not going to solve the problem. It's such a complicated, difficult problem. I don't think it's going to be solved by any one thing, but perhaps no through traffic. It's time for no through traffic or local traffic only. I'll let the chief and public works come up with the verbiage. They know it far better than me, but I think it's time for us to think about doing that. It's a couple of signs. Let's do it, see if we can help.
You know, that's a good point, and.
They are up there, right?
I know what they have a sign there. It says, I don't believe it says no through traffic, but I think it says, it may say that, but it says something like residents only. Local traffic only.
Right, something like that.
It's already posed. Without, you know, there are some limitations on enforceability of those on the streets. However, with the shopping center, it would be my intent to contact the owner and have an agreement.
Traffic control.
Traffic control agreement that would allow us with that shopping center, with, no, with the daycare center owner, that would give us the authority to write tickets if violated on that private property.
That's a great, yeah.
Okay, my thought, but.
So, we got.
Try that into then the signage will work and can be enforced.
So, we can bring that up and start some discussions, maybe a little bit of that material in June. Okay, anything else? Anybody else have anything new business? I would add one thing. One of the comments that I've had from residents is our, our school zones are really, like, poorly painted. According to him, I've had a kid in grade school for a while, in fact, he'll be graduating this year, so they suggested that we do a review of the lighting and the painting around our school zones to see how well they're marked. So, if we can, if we can do that, that would be great, and we can maybe even add to the one that we're talking about now, just to make sure that we got some school zones painted. Very good. There's nothing else. I would entertain your motion to adjourn, and we'll be moving right into the committee of the whole meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by trustee Danny, seconded by trustee Cammer. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Aaronz?
Yes.
Cammer?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
Yes.
Danny?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
We are adjourned. Once again, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to Village of Bartlett Committee of the Whole Meeting for May 19, 2015. I call this meeting to order and ask the clerk to please call.